Good evening. The May tenth, twenty twenty one virtual meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY twenty two county general and Board of Education budget. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
We're gonna start with going order of districts. Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have the full council in attendance.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Fiedler. As we gather here today as members of the county council, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and county and our community, keeping in mind always the commitments we have made to those we represent, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things which we fulfill, which fulfill those commitments. And let us continue to strive to hear the voices of those who have entrusted us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and is necessary in light of the health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV on the web. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. This technology also satisfies our rules of procedure that apply to meetings and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Second, councilman first.
Thank you. All in favor, say hi.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills.
Bill number thirty-two twenty-one, in ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anarondle County. Bill number thirty-three twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill number thirty-four twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-five twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-six twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-seven twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-eight twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-nine twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number forty twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-one twenty-one, in ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-two twenty-one, in ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, ARPS Council of Anarondle County Special Revenue Fund, Annapolis and Anarondle County Conference and Visitors Bureau Special Revenue Fund. Bill number forty-three twenty-one, in ordinance concerning public works, solid waste collection, solid waste service charge, solid waste landfill, and facility delivery fees. Bill number forty-four twenty-one, in ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now you can catch your breath. I will be calling on other people. First, we will have about six people speaking, giving presentations. They represent various groups in the county, and then we will go to the individuals who have signed up to speak. The first person to make a brief statement on the budget is Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarondle County. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the county council. For the record, I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarondle County. Thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of County Executive Stuart Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The proposed budget before you represents a welcome departure from last year when the county reduced revenue estimates and scaled back critical programs and initiatives in order to account for the economic impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Fortunately, last year's conservative budgeting maneuvers have positioned the county very well as we emerge from the COVID economy. Therefore, County Executive Pittman has characterized this budget as getting back on track. Due largely to the federal assistance bills that buoyed the national economy and our strong local employment base, the county's local income tax revenue exceeded FY twenty-one budget estimates by forty-one million dollars. Also, a surprisingly robust real estate market resulted in higher than anticipated recordation and tra- transfer tax revenue, which came in twenty-five million dollars higher than budgeted. Combined with cost savings across county government, this results in a healthy county fund balance of more than one hundred and fourteen million dollars. This year's total general fund budget is one billion eight hundred seventy-six million five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, an increase of one hundred fifty-seven point three million or nine point one percent from the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. However, it is important to keep in mind that the fourteen point two million dollars of this increase is the fund balance mentioned before. Excluding that fund balance, that's an increase of eighty point eight million dollars or four point eight percent in recurring revenue year over year. Comparing the FY twenty-two budget to the revised FY twenty-one budget estimates reduces the year-over-year increase in recurring funding to thirty-two point nine million or one point nine percent. The proposed budget keeps local income tax rates unchanged at two point eight one percent, the fourth lowest rate in Maryland in fiscal year twenty-one. The proposed budget also adheres to the county's property tax revenue cap, and the property tax rate declines slightly to ninety-three point three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, the seventh lowest rate in Maryland. The fiscal year twenty-two budget makes several investments to secure long-term fiscal stability. The proposed budget includes an eleven million dollar contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund, also known as the rainy day fund. This will result in an estimated balance of ninety-five point seven million dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty-two. The budget also fully funds the annual contribution to our other post-employment benefits fund, known as the OPEB fund, and makes an additional one-time payment of twenty million dollars. This is akin to paying down the principal of your mortgage and will reduce our future required annual payments. The budget reduces the county's structural deficit from twenty-four point seven million dollars to nineteen point nine million dollars, and the county executive is committed to continuing to reduce it over the coming years. Finally, the county lowered our estimate of what our pension investments will earn in the future from seven point four five percent to seven point zero percent. This will result in a larger annual contribution and less dependence on the whims of the stock market, meaning that county employees and retirees can count on their future benefits, which they earned during their employment, being there when they need it. The proposed budget includes seven hundred eighty-four million dollars for the Board of Education, a thirty-four point five million dollar increase from last year, and fifteen point seven million dollars more than the state required maintenance of effort level. Adding in debt service, school health, and school safety results in total school funding of eight hundred ninety-six million dollars or fifty point eight percent of the county operating budget. This year, the budget prioritizes the compensation package for our educators with a one percent cost of living increase and a step increase. County Executive Pittman's budget also makes an additional eight million dollars investment in catch-up steps for those Board of Education employees who did not receive their contractual steps in prior years. For those eligible, this comes in the form of one full back step and a second mid-year back step. In addition, the proposed budget funds a total of fifty-three new school positions, fifteen positions for special education and school counseling, six for English language acquisition, two point five for the new triple E program in the Glenn Burney Cluster, an additional teacher for Cat North, and twenty-six point four new teacher positions to begin the eleventh grade at Crofton High School. Anarondle Community College recently ranked number one in the nation by Forbes Magazine or received forty-six point four million dollars in county funding, an increase of one point, of one million dollars. This will allow them to keep tuition rates unchanged this year. The library system will receive twenty-four point nine million of general fund support, an increase of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars compared to last year. For public safety and our first responders, the proposed budget of three hundred seventy-nine point one million adds six new positions in the police department and two each in our fire and sheriff departments. The budget includes continued funding to begin the body worn camera program and increases the capacity of our crisis intervention teams. The proposed budget uses three point eight million dollars of fund balance for a one-time boost to the fire apparatus budget, allowing the fire department to purchase much-needed replacement tanker trucks, ambulances, and other vital equipment needs. Other notable new initiatives in the budget include three new planners for the Office of Planning and Zoning to staff up the office as it prepares to implement Plan Twenty Forty and begin the region plans. Three new positions are also proposed to create a stormwater strike team in the Office of Inspections and Permits. And the budget adds a new park ranger for Lake Waterford and two new part-time rangers to oversee and enhance the county's growing natural trails network. For the county enterprise funds, water and wastewater utility fees remain unchanged, as does the county's stormwater fee. The proposed budget includes an increase in the annual solid waste fee from two hundred ninety-eight dollars to three hundred and forty-one dollars, which is about three and a half dollars per month. This is the first rate increase since twenty thirteen. With respect to the fiscal year twenty-two capital budget, the three, three hundred seventy-five point eight million dollars of expenditures includes two hundred million for Board of Education projects, which is fifty-three point two percent of the total capital budget. Specific projects included in this year's capital budget for the Board of Education are four point eight million for Old Middle, Old Mill Middle School South, seventy-eight point eight million for Old Mill West High School, twenty-three point seven million for Quarterfield Elementary, twenty point two million for Hillsmere Elementary, twenty-nine point nine million for Rippling Woods Elementary, and nine point six million dollars for West County Elementary. Additionally, the proposed budget includes two point three million for athletic stadium improvements, twenty point six million for building system and maintenance backlog projects, four point two million for all-day kindergarten and pre-K classroom space, twenty, two point zero million for roof replacement, and three hundred thousand dollars for school playgrounds. Notable new county projects in the county executive's proposed capital budget include three point three million for Arnold Senior Center renovation and expansion, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to establish a forest conservation mitigation fund, five hundred thousand to begin a new fire station in Jessup, four point five million dollars to plan and acquire land for a new fire training academy, three hundred seventy-six thousand to begin the new Odenton Library Community Park, two point five million dollars for the Jug Bay Environmental Education Center, and one point two million dollars to begin the Quiet Waters Park rehabilitation. The budget also includes eight point two million dollars for continued progress on the WBNA South Shore and Broadneck Trails, and thirty-four point eight million dollars of new funding for the West County Swim Center beginning in fiscal year twenty-four. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present the, this overview tonight. The county executive and the entire budget team look forward to working with the county council and the auditor as we work to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website, www.aacounty.org. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Next, we have Ms. Melissa Ellis, President of Board of Education of Anarondle County.
Chairman Lacy, Vice Chairman Radvian, and members of the council, good evening. Melissa Ellis, Board of Education of Anarondle County, President. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the board and the needs of our school system. The last couple of years, the budget priorities of the board have been the following. Bring equity to our staff by making up for missteps that have caused a pay gap for half of our workforce. Do more to support the mental health of our students by bringing in more school counselors and mental health professionals in order to bring the workload of these key positions to a more manageable level. And to fund more positions in special education and English language acquisition to keep up with the growing need to support these students. Today, our priorities remain the same, but with a greater urgency. The lasting impact of closing schools during the pandemic means that many students are suffering from the disconnection from their peers and their teachers, from the stress of online learning, and from the stress of the virus itself. As we prepare to bring our students back to their buildings full-time in the fall, we anticipate the workload of our student support services staff will be even greater as students try to catch up academically, adjust to the social environment, and try to find their new normal. Students needing special services like special education and our English language learners will require extra attention in order to prevent long-term losses in academic advancement. To be honest, a year ago, none of us realistically thought we would be in a place to now consider addressing the back steps we, as a county, have committed to fixing. When everything shut down, the economic outlook was grim. While I believe strongly that we owe our county residents a fiscally responsible budget, we may never be in a place again where we can make our staff whole and restore morale in a time when it is so badly needed. With the passing of the blueprint for Maryland's future, future bud- budgets will be much more restricted to meeting mandates imposed by the legislation. We simply cannot perpetuate an environment indefinitely in which teachers work day in and day out with our students at a pay rate which is lower than, than their equally or less experienced peers. These professionals are critical to the well-being and success of our students, and they need to know that our county values their contributions. In every instance where an experienced teacher leaves our school system to work in a surrounding county and they are replaced by a less experienced teacher, we are doing a disservice to our students. This does not mean that our new teachers are not capable and valuable additions to their schools, but a healthy school has a good balance of experienced teachers who, in addition to developing sound and proven practices in the classroom, have forged good relationships with their students, their colleagues, and administration, and therefore can support their less experienced peers as they develop those important relationships and skills. We need our experienced teachers. Finally, I ask that you please keep our capital projects moving forward. It is critical that we open an elementary school in West County on schedule to keep up with extreme growth in the area and prevent our youngest students from trying to learn in overcrowded classrooms. And as we prepare to fill our school buildings again, it is important to remember that school security has been a priority for Anarondle County, and we must complete the important upgrades to enhance the safety of our buildings. Parents are asking for it, and understandably so. I hope this helps as you consider the county executive's budget and what, what will really make an impact for our students. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. We welcome the opportunity to work together to move our school system forward as we begin to look beyond this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Thank you for being with us. Our next speaker is Mr. Russell Leoni, President, Teachers Association of Anarondle County, ORTAC.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak this evening. My name is Russell Leoni, and I'm an elementary school teacher currently serving as the president of the Teachers Association of Anarondle County, ORTAC. We represent over sixty-four hundred Unit One educators in Anarondle County Public Schools. And these educators have shown their incredible resilience and creativity over this past year to serve our students during this pandemic. So I start by acknowledging the open and honest exchanges with the county executives, budget officers over the past few months, and we offer our sincere appreciation for all that we have accomplished together so far. I also want to thank the, the council and county, county executive Pittman for their commitment over the last three years to resolving the experience credit issues for our educators. This has been a top priority for our members, and we appreciate all that you have done so far to address their budget concerns. Now, we pressed hard this year to try and resolve the experience credit issue because as the pandemic has taught us, these challenges are ahead, are unpredictable. And with the directives coming from the blueprint next year, we don't know what FY twenty-three holds. We're optimistic about the funding and resources from the state and federal government directed broadly at education. And we believe this funding will help us create a more equitable and just education system. And we look forward to building that future with you. And while we were hopeful that the county executive would have included a little more in this year's budget request, we are extremely happy with the broad framework County Executive Pittman has proposed. TAC is asking this council to consider two main areas in this budget that we believe are the creative solutions needed to address the problem that have impacted our salaries for a decade. First, we encourage the county council and the Board of Education to allow for real bargaining and flexibility about how we apply the money offered in this budget. TAC has a vision apparent that five point five million dollars proposed as the one percent cola with the funding allocated for back steps to resolve this experience and credit imbalance this year. And with this budget proposal, this issue can be resolved right now. Now, over half of the members, thirty-four hundred and one Unit One educators, are being paid a salary unequal to their credited years of experience. For example, Kristin is a teacher at Glenn Burney High School. She has over fifteen years of experience and started with AACPS eight years ago. She's a dedicated educator who works and lives in District Two. And when she came to the county, she was informed that she would have to lose three steps, to be fair, to fellow educators. Almost swaying her decision on whether to work in this county. But she is now on step eleven, losing nine thousand dollars a year, and she says, "I've been a science lead, an e-coach, and I serve on the leadership committee at my school. I feel I do right for the county." Now, we have taken steps towards resolving this issue and changing the personal and professional lives for many of our educators like Kristin. And we are thankful that this budget proposes the amount of money that it would take to make all of these educators whole. Given the uncertainty of coming, of the coming years, we don't want to risk not doing the best we can for all educators as quickly as possible. Now, second, we look forward to, we look to receive the final accounting of FY twenty-one budget cycle, and we are hopeful that the county and the Board of Education will again see the surpluses in the instructional salary budget track. Our hope is that you will be open to discussing the importance of using that funding for what it is really intended, salaries. And we look forward to being included in any conversations around how the surplus can be used. And we are glad that this budget attempts to address the fact that our educators are an essential part of our community and should be shown the respect and dignity of their pay. It's our goal every year, and especially this year, to remove the distraction of inequitable pay so that our educators can fully focus on the most important task of offering our students the world-class education they deserve. Now, it's been a difficult year for all of us, and we face challenges that will continue to impact each of us for the rest of our lives. But our two priorities, working to fix the challenges, excuse me, working to fix the experience credit issue as quickly as possible and ensuring continued dialogue about the use of surplus funding will go a long way to doing right by those who keep our students safe this year. Thank you for showing educators that their time and their service to our students and their families deserves recognition. We appreciate this opportunity and hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni. Have a good evening. Our next presenter is Ms. Helen Wilkerson, President of the Secretaries and Assistance Association of Anarondle County, ORSAIC. Good evening. You're muted, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I thought I'm muted. Good evening.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Loud and clear. Thank you very much. Ladies, Sarah Lacy, Chairman Lisa Baden, Vice Chairman, and members of the Anarondle County Council. I am Helen Wilkerson, President of the Secretaries and Assistance Association of Anarondle County, Technology Support Technician. Our membership is comprised mostly of teacher assistants, school-based and non-school-based secretaries, computer technicians, media technicians, and variety of other Unit Four employees. We are a proud and dedicated group of AACPS employees who enjoy our work and are proud of the contributions we make to ensure that instruction is delivered to the children of Anarondle County. We understand the new era we are living in. Once COVID nineteen came into our lives and workplaces, our Unit Four employees continued to work hard to ensure the bills were being paid, payroll was met, registering of students for school continued, ordering and receiving of necessary supplies to clean buildings, distributing and repairing Chromebooks and laptops for teachers and staff, continued to be virtual and hybrid substitute teaching, assisting with the distribution of the COVID nineteen vaccine, and many other minute or important jobs in town. All SAIC members and Unit Four employees contributed in ways that are, are not so visible at times. This description would take longer than we have tonight. Many have worked beyond their contractual hours without asking for compensation so that they can be viewed by principals and the immediate supervisors as team players. Several members were, while performing the duties previously mentioned, were exposed and contracted COVID nineteen. All of them, following the rules regarding quarantine and then return to their duty stations to continue carrying out their responsibilities so that AACPS can be viewed as carrying out its mission of education, educating the children of Anarondle County. We ask for your support of the budget recommended by County Executive Stuart Pittman. This budget recommendation includes modest cost of living increase and step increase, along with makeup steps from previous years that will assist employees with keeping up with rapidly rising prices that are occurring in our cities and counties. Funding this request is extremely important as we move forward in a post-COVID nineteen environment. Much has been lost and many struggles are still occurring. This good faith effort gives, gives hope to our Unit Four members and lets them know that the elected officials care and support the work that they do. We hope that you, the county council, see this the same way in which we do. Again, I ask that you support the budget recommendation of our county executive, and I thank you for your time and support now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Good day.
Good night. Now, we have Ms. Edith Picken, President, Association of Educational Leaders. Good evening.
Good evening. My name again is Edie Picken, and I'm currently President of AEL, which represents all Unit Two employees. With respect to the superintendent's proposed budget, AEL can and will support a budget that provides for increased spending that enhances the education of our students. Just as important, it must embrace and recognize the value of employees. As we know, the most significant cost in the educational budget is employee compensation. It is the allocation of the request and the equitable distribution of those funds that are equal, if not most important. With the passing of or accepting of any budget request, it is critical to view the compensation portion in context. I'm referencing the relationship with the compensation. I'm referencing the relationship with the compensation between the various groups of employees. The important question here is, does the compensation being offered take into consideration the balance of the job and the supervision that is required? Is there a proper and fair differential between those that are supervised with those that are providing the supervision? I am referring to school-based personnel and the different responsibilities of those at the schoolhouse. With respect to Unit Two compensation, we are currently engaged in the negotiations process, and as usual, compensation continues to be a form of the topic. As a result, AEL is unable to specifically address salary increases this evening. Those discussions will continue at the negotiating table. I must add, I use the term negotiations loosely here. What is important to note, the allocation of pay between the different employee units contemplates and produces a paid differential. Over the last several years, more importantly, the last three more specifically, a continued erosion in the differential for Unit Two employees has occurred at rates as it relates to Units Five and Six. This issue needs to be assessed and addressed. Unit Two consists of three hundred and forty-two employees, predominantly school-based administrators with a few positions at the board. Between the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year and the current twenty twenty-one, overall, Unit Two received approximately a six percent salary increase. On the other hand, Unit Five, consisting of four hundred and forty employees overall, received approximately between ten percent and fourteen percent increases in salary, with forty-nine of those employees receiving a twenty percent or greater increase in salary resulting in some instances of job title reclassification and/or creation of new positions. This equates to those individuals potentially receiving anywhere between seven thousand and ten thousand or greater in pay increases. Unit Six, consisting of fifty-five employees overall, in this same time period, received anywhere between fifteen percent and eighteen percent with approximately six numbers receiving between eighteen and twenty percent increases in salary resulting in similar or greater pay increase. I urge you to look closely at this budget item category and to compare it to the percentage of actual pay increase paid to all of the represented employee groups. The fact that a smaller number of employees, we are talking more specifically about Unit Six, as the superintendent's quarter base of a fresh one, has dubbed receive the largest aggregate amount. The smallest portion of the employee compensation package being provided does not tell the whole story. Clearly, the amount offered to each individual in Unit Six in real dollars far exceeds any amount offered in real dollars to any Unit Two employee. It continues to erode the differential and continues to unfairly compensate one group of already highly paid personnel at the expense of another. The amounts mentioned above are submitted as proof of these excesses and salary advances for Units Six and Five as compared to Unit Two to the Board's internal auditor at his request. It is clear that this path of excessive compensation at the expense of Unit Two and other employee groups is continuing. The course current proposal shared with AEL as it relates to funding is appreciated, but paying those for what was agreed to and underfunded in the past is not a pay raise, particularly regarding the ongoing increases in workload. Where is the compensation for that? A budget that includes compensation placeholders that are prepared and submitted for approval before negotiations are concluded is not a negotiated budget. It is not a product of any negotiating process that requires bylaw, good faith bargaining. Waiting on the superintendent's proposed budget with its placeholder line item is an unacceptable, unacceptable mechanism to support the bargaining process. Bargaining typically does not begin, let alone resolve itself, in any tentative agreement until the Board of Education comes to the table to discuss the matter after the superintendent's budget has been submitted. Result of this process, the superintendent's placeholder item is the Board of Education's first and best offer. No true good faith bargaining occurs. It pretends to be that, but it only shows as a calendar items to say negotiating occurred when no negotiating occurred at all. At the table, we are told what to accept and treat with disrespect and are treated with disrespect in a condescending manner as though we should be grateful for what we were offered. In the review of salary differentials, it will be important to identify growth, changes to position titles, and the creation of new positions allowing for increases in salary for Units Five and Six. Units One and Two are not able to have title reclassifications, so there is no resulting potential for increased compensation. Aside from compensation, Unit Six employees receive in large part the same benefits that Unit Two receives under the negotiated agreement. So in closing, a fully funded budget is essential for the maintenance of a first-class school system, a budget which recognizes the hard work and dedication of its employees as a justified reward for the sacrifices which are made daily. Increased compensation is welcome and deserved. Compensation should be reexamined in those that are involved in the delivery and direct delivery of education support of and to the students at the school level should be given a higher and well-deserved priority. I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak with you this evening again, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pickin. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Skip Ald, CEO of Anaronda County Public Libraries. Good evening, Skip.
Hello, Chair Lacy, Vice Chair Rodby and Councilperson Sfeedler, Hare, Pickard, Brucey, and Volkey, and all residents of Anaronda County. I do want to thank you all for the strong support of libraries that you've given us the past two years. From funding of discoveries to increasing the materials budget, bringing our Glen Burnie and Millersville libraries into the capital program, you have been a tremendously important partner as we work to improve our library system. You're moving us toward completing the early years of a library renaissance that began seven or eight years ago and that's taking root with the current council and administration. So thank you for enabling the rebirth of libraries and library services, programs, and resources throughout the county. This is a hundredth year of service to the people of our county. I have some library cards that some of you and some of the audience may have used over the years. We've got a variety that we have had. Some of you use the keychain kinds of cards, and this is the newest card, which is our, it's a photo of the Michael Bush Library. We have sixteen libraries, four hundred staff, and a great collection of print, audiovisual, and digital resources. And we provide a robust array of services and programs. Over this past year, we reinvented our public library several times. Many of our new ways of doing business will carry forward forever just as we anticipate bringing back services that we had to put on hiatus this past year. We switched to online service on March thirteenth last year, purchasing lots more eBooks and doing virtual storytimes and other virtual programs the very next week. I'm extremely proud of our library system and our staff because we continued to provide service throughout the pandemic. By June first, we brought all staff back to the buildings. We created and opened curbside service starting on June eighth, and we have alternated between in-person appointments and being fully open throughout the course of the year based on public health metrics. Three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I guess it was, on April the twelfth, we reopened our libraries for walk-in service. We expect to open meeting rooms and in-person programs by summer or late summer or fall. I would like to invite everyone in our community and certainly in this audience to visit your libraries. We welcome you with open arms. Among many innovations over the past year, the one that we believe will have the greatest impact on the future of all Anaronda County residents is the elimination of overdue fines. Last week during your work session, I spoke to you about our supplemental budget requests. We appreciate that the county executive has proposed funding several of our requests, including one of four positions that we are asking for. These four positions may be our most important requests to ensure the long-term health and stability of our operations. Two of those four positions will ensure digital success. The Media and Technology Assistant, which is in the county executive's proposed budget, and the Social Media Manager position that we've asked for in past years. Based on the current level of activities and behind-the-scenes operations and the vast amount of materials coming in and moving through our delivery service, the third position we need is a full-time materials-receiving clerk. And finally, we are more and more focused on data-driven decision-making and need a business intelligence analyst, another position we've requested for a few years. So why is this so important to us? We need someone to analyze data and to develop clarifying and insightful representations of data so that we can implement effective and cost-efficient strategies to advance services and meet the needs of everyone, especially those most in need. Turning to our capital budget, we are thrilled to see funding in county executive CIP proposal for both Glen Burnie and Millersville Libraries. These projects will complete our current facilities master plan and the first phase of renaissance of our library system. We also expect to expand our mobile outreach program with the vehicle that is part of the funding proposal of the Maryland Live Local Development Council. We appreciate your valuable support as we take this journey together. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ald, and we all know books can take us anywhere in our, that we can imagine. So thank you again to all of our presenters. We will now open the public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-two budget. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. In addition to the group of people that registered to speak this evening, we received three letters that are, that are all different testimony on the budget that were received by the council. They've been added to the record as well.
Thank you. We have twelve individuals signed up to speak on the proposed FY twenty-two budget. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. First, we have Liam McNally.
Madam Chair, I don't see that our first two registered speakers have joined the meeting yet. If you wanted to start with number three, we could circle back to one and two at the end.
Okay. Next, we have Rich Suruolo. I apologize for butchering your name. Madam Secretary, he was there, but now he seems to be gone. Oh, there he is.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. My Zoom suddenly crashed on me. My apologies. Thanks, everyone, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair. My name is Rich Suruolo, three Carville Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm hoping to advocate on our thirteen-hundred-plus members of Parent Advocacy Consortium to have several positions reinstated into the budget that was proposed by the Board of Education to Mr. Pittman's office. The ratios in many of the schools across our school system are unsustainable. We have the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, which this is our, really our first foray into meeting our obligations to our students, especially those with disabilities and Black and Brown students as well. Having students with a ratio of school counselor to student of five hundred to one, for instance, at Davidsonville, Forest Seasons, Ridgeway, and Watch Apple, the ratios are six hundred to one counselor. In an age where we're coming back from a pandemic, these kids have not been in school buildings in over a year, they're going to need that support, and the community at, you know, at large is going to need that support as well as the teachers. We're going to need as many health, mental health professionals as possible to support everyone going back in the school buildings and getting, getting back to normal once the school buildings are open and everyone's vaccinated. So I don't want to hit you with a lot more stats. I just wanted to make that case, and I hope that you will reinstate the positions that were removed. I believe seven school psychologists, seven school counselors, and three social workers are just a drop in the bucket. We've got a long way to go. We've got ten years of implementing this a new reform in education and making our school system one for the nation and the world to really emulate. So thank you all for your, your time, and I'll yield back the rest of my time tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Suruolo. You were actually precisely on time, so thank you. Madam Secretary, should we go to number four?
Yes, Madam Chair. Also, I'm not certain what happened. Zoom decided to, to bring Mr. Suruolo on screen. But we will be proceeding by hearing from people in voice only after this.
No problem. Okay, well, next on our list is Ms. Mina Kim. But Madam Secretary, she also appears not to be here. Okay, then next is Mr. Michael Vazquez.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening. We can't say your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Michael Vazquez. I am a parent of an elementary school teacher, elementary school student at Jacobsville Elementary in District Three in the Chesapeake Eastern. I'm also on the PTA there, but I'm speaking on my own behalf as a parent today. Several, if not all, county council members have talked over, over the past year about the the need for the mental health concern for our students and teachers and staff. Yet, the budget proposed by the AACPS School Board wanted to address all those by adding more professional counselors, mental health experts, and increased faculty to deal with class sizes. These same people that you claim to care for and support for the past year are now being left behind as a result of the budget cuts that you are proposing. Student and teacher ratio is a main factor in students' mental health and their feeling of safety in the classroom. Research shows, I'm not going to list a lot of details about research. Research shows clearly that students in smaller class sizes feel safer, more comfortable, and mentally secure as well as getting more needed attention from the teachers whenever they have difficulty in a class. So the budget proposed by AACPS Board of Education focused on helping improve classroom performance and student and faculty mental health by hiring more teachers to fill a current lack of positions. I think it's a hundred and twenty positions that are currently open that need to be filled to have safe and secure student-teacher ratios. They did not ask for a hundred and twenty positions, but they did ask for a good number, and many of those were cut by the budget, by the county commission. So my request is that you literally put your money where your mouth has been for the past year and provide the resources to pay for these mental health experts, counselors, and the teachers to help reduce the student-teacher ratios in the classroom and support our, our students and teachers with their mental health concerns and needs, as you've been saying for a very long time now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vazquez.
Thank you. That's all I need.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Michael Lofton.
Unmute. There I am. Good evening, good evening to all of you. I'm Mike Lofton. I'm a fifty-six-year, I did the math today. I'm a fifty-six-year resident of Anaronda County, hoping for many more. I live on Polling House Road in Harwood. I'm confident that you know about the record-setting public demand for outdoor recreation in 2020. There's every reason to believe it will continue. The inadequacy of our park system is most apparent in the public waterfront parks. We have failed, failed to accommodate a public desperate for relief from summer heat, desperate for a safe place for family recreation, and desperate for the sole satisfying effects of the wonderful Chesapeake Bay. The inadequacy is not new. We've been failing for a long time, and this year is probably going to be the worst. We have two full-service county beaches, and one of them, Fort Smallwood, closes next week for the entire summer. The other, Mayo Beach Park, is not open on weekdays. Here we sit with a fully serviceable beach, and we don't open it in a time when people are desperate for outdoor recreation, when we've closed one of the two beaches. Please give the Department of Recreation and Parks the resources to open that park and a mandate to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. Next, I apologize in advance. I'm going to mispronounce your name. Nandi Nazilli, Nazilli. Please tell me how to pronounce your name. Mr. Nazilli. Madam Secretary, I see that Mr. Nazilli is with us, but is still muted.
Yes, Madam Chair. I am pushing through prompts to unmute here. I think maybe we can give him another chance, and then maybe we can circle back at the end again. I'm not getting a response here.
I think that's, I think that's fine. Okay, well, then we will go to Robert. I'm going to mispronounce your name too. I'm so sorry. Robert Stojakovich.
Stojakovich.
Stojakovich. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Again, my name is Robert Stojakovich. I'm of eleven seventy-seven, Outa Wild Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm of eleven seventy-seven, Outa Wild Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm a father, excuse me, of a seventh-grade student and cellist at Macatee River Middle School, and I'm also his band and orchestra director, and I'm speaking on behalf, on my own behalf. I would like to thank the Honorable Chairman Lacy and Vice President, Vice Chairman Rodby, and the entire county council members for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been a music teacher in Anorond County now for thirty-five years. I've had the pleasure to work with students from Southern Senior, Southern Middle, Edgewater Elementary Schools, South River. Actually, those were all at the same time. Bates Middle School, Chesapeake Senior, and currently Macatee River Middle School. This morning, in fact, I rehearsed in person outside our school grounds with thirty-five members of our A-Day cohort and an additional forty students online virtually with a simulcast rehearsal. It was fifty-five degrees and windy, yet these students persevered. Why? Because in 2019, before the pandemic, we were only one of three middle schools statewide to perform Grade Four literature and receive a superior rating. I would like you to please consider Dr. Aralado's budget request. In fact, I would like you to consider exceeding it in the area where we come to reducing the student-teacher ratio. In my thirty-five years, I've seen class sizes continue to elevate from twenty-two to twenty-four students in the nineteen-eighties to currently thirty-two to thirty-four-plus students. This year has been like no other year in my thirty-five years as an educator. Next year, as students return to the classrooms, we will ultimately encounter a varying degree of student readiness like we've never seen. Let's be clear. We will be at a critical point due to an extremely challenging circumstance of a once-in-a-lifetime event through no fault of any of the stakeholders in education or government. However, it, it will be our responsibility to move forward. This means we can no longer ignore the overcrowded classrooms and the lack of financial support to fund fully functioning middle school programs. This includes the ability for students to have access to complete offerings of the encore program. Now, I know what you might be saying. Stoyakovitch, weren't you the one that fought tooth and nail to get the AB Day versus the WILL? And yes, that's true. But before the pandemic, I would not go back to the WILL, and after the pandemic, I would not go to the WILL either, because you can't trade mastery of any subject that comes with the AB Day.
Mr. Stoyakovitch? I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time has expired.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you for this time.
Thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Jan Delft.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Rodby, Councilwoman Pickard, and my own Council Representative Pruski, and members of the County Council. My name is Jan Delft. I am a special educator at Severnham Park Middle and a member of the Teachers Association of Anorond County, or TAC. And so I'm here speaking tonight as a special educator. I'd like to certainly extend a very grateful thank you to County Executive Pittman and his team for the efforts to provide educators and support personnel with what is needed as we move forward. So a very quick, obviously brief story. So one of the little boys on my caseload, I shouldn't say little, they're taller than I am, I think virtually, I still haven't even met them, but I know they're all taller. So this little boy is on vacation, and he is on the beach, and he's literally on his computer, working with me. And it was amazing, I still get chills just thinking about that. So the rest of that story is, with that particular young, young person, the hours are long for him and for me, but it's a double commitment. We're in it together, but when my head hits the pillow, that's when the inequities come into my mind. Not necessarily for me, but for so many of my colleagues. The fact that there are wage differences and through, you know, I don't want to get into the reasoning and all that, but we do our job because we love it. They're like family, they love us, and so it just, it's so much harder when the compensation isn't there. So we're thankful to the Board of Education, we're thankful for Executive Pittman, we're thankful for the County Council, and we urge the County Council to encourage the Board of Ed to give us the flexibility to do our one percent COLA with the five million dollars and help make other teachers whole, help them be on the same experience step along with their.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
All right.
Next, we have Jason Schwer.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my name is Jason Schwer. I'm a member of the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee in Odenton and Town Center Commons Community, also in Odenton. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, and I'm here representing the advisory committee. On behalf of the committee, I'm here today in strong support of the Odenton Library Community Park. We are excited about this project as it brings sorely needed recreation space and public amenities desired by residents of the Odenton community and surrounding area, to include for me. The Odenton Town Center has difficulty attracting mixed-use development desired by the vision of the County Council and the Odenton Town Center Master Plan. The committee frequently hears from community members that the area is lacking in recreation spaces and other public amenities. If the town center is to become a livable, walkable, workable community we envision, it needs to have amenities to attract and sustain both businesses and families. To this end, the committee received feedback in support of the park from over one hundred seventy-two residents and eleven organizations representing thousands of people within the Odenton area. To build a sense of community, the Odenton Town Center needs a central location to gather for events. This is a common feature for a town center, but is missing in Odenton. Our town center is designed to be the heart of Odenton, with two arterial roads having near constant traffic. While new construction includes sidewalks to connect the town center to the surrounding areas, there are limited places residents can go to escape walking beside a busy road. The children within the town center play in the largest open space they have, the Mark Train parking lot. So having a place for children to run, play, and just be children is critical to happy homes and happy living in Odenton. Our community is very excited about the Odenton Community Park, and we look forward to the park coming to fruition. Thank you for your consideration of the proposal for the inclusion of funding in fiscal year 2022 to initiate the Odenton Library Community Park project for the betterment of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have Bishop Antonio Palmer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, sir.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair Lacy, and also Madam Vice Chair Rodby, and I definitely got to give a big shout out to my councilman, Andrew Pruski, and thank you to the entire County Council for affording me the opportunity to testify tonight at the public hearing. Since I have two minutes, I'm going to try my best to talk quickly. I'm here representing Kingdom Care Incorporated's project, the West County Family Support Center. Under the leadership of Senator Pam Vidal and Delegate Sandy Bartlett, Kingdom Care has been awarded a legislative bond bill to open the West County Family Support Center. We have all of the collaborative partnerships and funding, with the exception of seventy-five thousand dollars for two teachers. There are currently over a hundred and thirty-five teen mothers in Anorond County, and only six to eight of them are attending an alternative program in partnership with the county's public school and Department of Social Service. Kingdom Care is asking that you will incorporate in the budget an allocation of seventy-five thousand dollars so that we can hire two teachers to serve up to fifteen teen mothers so that they can obtain their high school diploma and not a GED. This is a very important program that fills an equity issue and gap in service. This program will afford teen mothers not only an opportunity to obtain their high school diploma, but to also have childcare while they are, while they are learning, and also wraparound services such as workforce development, mentoring, and career planning. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and God bless.
Thank you very much, Bishop Palmer, and God bless you too. Thank you for joining us. Next, we have John Mayo.
Good evening. Thank you for all this time. My name is Jack Mayo. My name is Jack Mayo, thirty-six eighty-five First Avenue in Edgewater, Maryland. I'm new down here, only been here seventy-eight years, and have seen five generations of my family come through this house. I'm here tonight to, to ask for funding for Long Point, which is a peninsula separating the South River from Selby Bay. The, the situation is critical. I'm not asking for, for money for fifteen-dollar pavers at Mayo Park. I'm not asking for new books. I'm not asking for new roads. I'm asking for corrections to situations that the county has, for lack of a better word, has screwed up on. They hired a company called Patriot Environmental to spray the point for aphrodisiac grasses and killed the grasses and killed the root system, and now the points are, Long Point is eroding away to nothing. What that means for the Selby residents is we get the wash from the boats coming and tidal waves coming up and down the South River. Most of the people in Selby Bay on the waterfront are at ground level. The houses in the South River are up high, so they don't get that. Most of the houses in Selby Bay do not have bulkheads. Why? Because the county won't give us bulkheads. So we don't get bulkheads, and we don't get any, any, any relief from, from erosion of Long Point. We need to get Long Point reestablished. We have taken James Kitchen and Eric Mickelson out in our boats and showed them the erosion of Long Point and the destruction that it's having on the residents of Selby on the bay, and they agree that something has to be done. So as I say, I'm asking for funding to correct the situation, which the county, the county mandated by, by killing the aphrodisiac grasses and by ruining the root system and eroding the Long Point. We, we need help, and I appreciate your time and efforts to hear me, and I hope that you'll, well, we, we definitely need funding so we don't get washed away here in Selby on the bay. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Have a good evening. Madam Secretary, I think we have heard from everyone who's actually here. Of the three people who signed up, I don't see them in our list that we skipped before.
I, yes, I agree with you, Madam Chair. I'm afraid that we have not had the individuals who registered to speak join the meeting, so they're not in our waiting room for me to bring forward.
Okay. Then at this time, the public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-two budget is now closed, this first public hearing. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Councilmember.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until 1:00 PM on Tuesday, May eleventh, 2021, for departmental budget presentations. Please continue to check the county website for important information and updates. Have a good evening.